This is Jason Anderson. It is 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 9th, and we are going to open up the public hearing. The public hearing is on the Killenly Community Center project. Bear with me one second. Right now, we're actually going to observe a moment of silence. We lost a very dear community member recently. On Sunday, Jerry Sinkmars unexpectedly passed away in an accident. So I will ask everyone to honor a moment of silence in his memory. On behalf of the Killenly Town Council, our condolences go out to Mr. Sinkmars' family and friends. We know this must be a very tough time for you, and our hearts go out for you. So back to the public hearing. The public hearing, as I stated, was on or is on the Killenly Community Center project, which is on this evening's agenda for the special town meeting. So this is in regards to consideration and action on ordinance to appropriate $27,800,000 for improvements to Westfield Avenue School, including renovations needed to serve as the community center and authorize the issuance of bonds and notes in the same amount. At this time, anyone who would like to come forward and speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, before it all, are we going to have this? Budge a little bit, just a little?
We will go to that once the meeting opens. This is the, right now, what's open is the public hearing. We haven't started the town council meeting. That is on the agenda, item three for the regular town council meeting. Anyone who would like to come forward, speak to this item, please come to the podium. State your name and address, please.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Ty Trotter. I live at 6 Schuman Avenue here in town. I'm a proud member of the Connecticut Carpenters, and I'd love to be a part of this project. I also have four young children here in town, and I'd like to be a part of making the town better. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I got a question, first of all. We don't get it all in here. We come back a second time at a public hearing?
I would have no problem asking for continuation.
Okay, good. Thank you. I'd like to, first of all, talk, I think because it's important. Oh, my name is John Serantopoulos. I live at 37 Tonk City Road in Killenly. Been here a long time. And I'd like to make everybody aware, and I hope a lot of people are watching at home because I don't think a lot of people realize, there's been an influx of people into this community. But in 1961 or '62, the federal government came in here with a program, and they wanted to refurbish the whole of downtown Danielson. And they were going to pay for 90% of it. And you can check Danielson transcript because the person who ran that opposed that, but I'm sure there's plenty of articles in there about this. They were going to pay 90% of that, and the taxpayers of the town of Killenly said, "No, we don't want that." Because if I want to build an outhouse, and this is a quote from that meeting, in my backyard, I'm going to build it. Now, they would have replaced sewer lines, utility run lines, they would have had a shopping area, a professional area, a housing area. All of this would have been gone. And our problems that exist today with an empty Main Street wouldn't be there. And that 10% of what that would have cost then would have been long gone. Killenly would have been in a good spot, just like Putnam is today. The second issue that I can think of where we made a lot of errors was the Kiss School. And I'll just give you a few examples. The roof, which is still, I believe, leaking today. It's moving like crazy because of its size and the type of material they put on it. The lintels over the doorways, that was an error by the architect. All the walls were up, nobody forgot to order them, okay? Or somebody forgot to order them. You know, designs were terrible. The guy had never done a school before, and they hired him to do that school. And I think there were heating problems there as well. Now, the library committee, I was a part of that with the town manager at the time, Tom Holdman, and I was on that committee for that. And at that time, they wanted to take Broad Street, the school that you people want to abandon now, and turn that into a library. Quinn Architects from, I think, Avon, Connecticut, came back with a bid, five-point-something million dollars. They were going to transverse that with steel beams in order to support the weight of the books and everything. I went to that meeting, and I asked a question. The architects gave us an alternative plan, I think for about $250,000, to build a new one. I said, "Why would we build, why wouldn't we build a new one for $250,000 rather than put $5 million into that building?" And that was the end of that, and the AMP became the property. The Blumenthal family sold it to the town of Killenly, and so it probably was about a half a million dollars in total. Incidentally, that was one of the reasons why Killenly didn't go for redevelopment. They were afraid the Blumenthal family and the Arthur Veier family were going to make tons of money because they owned a lot of properties in this community. That's one of the reasons why they voted that redevelopment down. Now, I've been on the building commission, I've been on the high school or the town council, so I know a little bit about these things. When we built that new high school, the problem was square footage. They said, "Look, we've got to have more square footage." And this thing went back and forth. I was the chair of the building committee at the time. When we discovered that we hit rock up there, the project manager came to me and gave me an estimate of how much it would cost, even though we had sunk a half a million dollars at that site, to move to where Kiss is because we own that property, right? We would have saved $3.5 million even after deducting the half a million dollars that we put into that. And then, as it turned out, we spent another $10 to $15 million above and beyond what the site cost estimate was up there, okay? That's the third error we made. Now, the president just, or they just got a transportation bill through, and it looks as though the Democrats somehow are going to get this bill back better. And we're going to have preschoolers in with our schools. And I think that's, there must be a superintendent of schools over there, if I'm correct. No? Okay. And he provided me with this study, and it was very useful, and I appreciate it, okay? And if I look at these figures correctly by births in the town of Killenly, I think you could safely say that we're going to have an influx of about 300 students because of preschool when that becomes mandatory nationwide. And then I went to the town meeting, I think it was your first meeting on this project, and Mary Colarol told me that the state said, "Look, you can't get 72% reimbursement because the state, Department of Education, Construction Grants and Review won't approve it because EastCon isn't considered an education." I called and spoke to two individuals there, and they're the two individuals that handle this. Michael Dixon and Costa Dematis. And they told me, "Yes, it's true. EastCon isn't a part of it." But the reason is that the legislation that governs them, EastCon wasn't around when that was written. All you have to do is get a representative to put a bill before the state legislature saying, "We want bonding so that we can go into that school because EastCon is educational." They admit to that. And you could get 72% reimbursement, and you could, you wouldn't have to worry about building a new school in two or three years. And that's what's going to happen if we give up this square footage. Now, again, in this report, in this New England School Development Council, it gives the projections on how many children are being born yearly. And I think it's safe to say that you're going to have, two grades are going to be involved in that, 300 additional students, okay? And then you could do it as new, okay? I called May Flexa to try to get her to listen to me, to explain, "All we have to do is have somebody request that this be a pawn of the bonding issue, and everybody and their brothers at the trough there." They get ball fields approved, they get civic centers approved, they do everything, right there. Killenly and Sean Johnson, who was an excellent legislator from this area, told me, "That is being done. All you need to do is have somebody do it." Okay? Called May Flexa four times, she never returned my call. So I'm here this evening to ask the townspeople to at least delay this decision that you people are contemplating making. And certainly, somebody should talk to the Board of Education. Until you can reach your legislators, and mine as well, and request that they apply for grant money so that we can go in on that Westfield Avenue school, repair it as new, we would save more money doing it that way. You could build a new community center, which we need, and that's no urgent problem that just came up. 30 years ago, when I convinced everybody not to turn that into a library, those problems were new then. I was a part of putting that elevator in and doing all of the other things that were done. And I asked my question, "Why those sofas weren't addressed when that new roof was put on?" One error after another. Just like, for example, we don't have this showing the blueprints of that new high school to date, and we were promised those. So we've made a lot of errors, and this is probably one of my last charges here because of age. But I would certainly hope that Killenly doesn't make the third major mistake that has hindered this community forever. Thank you very much.
Ms. Chloe, can we just get some clarification possibly on one of his comments? If EastCon were considered an entity where we could get reimbursement from school construction office, would that, would the five-year lease be a hindrance? Because we only have a five-year lease from EastCon, and anything, my understanding is any money we get from, for grants from the state for school construction, we have to maintain that building for 20 years. So would we be then in a position where after five years, after the five-year lease is up, if EastCon left, we would be on the hook to repay the rest of the grant?
So you are correct that the lease would be a consideration. And the other hurdle that we had was that the Office of School Construction, EastCon is not a Killenly public school, it is a private entity. And that was the two-pronged challenge that we had with the Office of School Construction. I spoke to that office as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward?
Jack Dusel from 23 Laurel Drive, Daville. Does anyone pay rent for that building right now? The Board of Ed or the other one?
Ms. Chloe, if you would.
Sure. So the Board of Education currently has a lease agreement with EastCon in which the Board of Education receives a specified number of seats within their program. That is an in-kind cost, so there's not actual physical money exchanged. However, if the Board of Education had to pay for those placements, it would cost the district about $450,000 annually.
$450,000. And, you know, when we built the high school, I don't know if it's eight or 10 years ago, the whole idea was, we got about 70% of all the monies that, when it was built, except for the auditorium. The auditorium, we had to pay on our own, if I'm correct on that. And so that's why we cheated, and we built a 350-seat auditorium instead of the nice thousand one we had now. Now, it's been eight or 10 years, however that's, long that's been, but we probably saved $5 to $7 million by not building an 1,100-seat auditorium, which we should have at the time, or at least had the option. Now, we went eight or 10 years without doing anything to the present auditor, the one we're talking about. So, in effect, we delayed paying $5 to $7 million 10 years ago because we had an auditorium that was already eight, 900 seats already we had in, you know, in tow. Now, for the, we really have to take into consideration that $5 to $7 million we saved 10 years ago because we, I don't say we cheated, but we didn't build what we could have. So when you take this overall project, you've got 20, 25% of the project is monies that we saved 10 years ago, or eight years ago, however long it's been. So what I'm saying is, you know, besides that, I know John was talking about his new programs coming up, but, you know, 12 years ago, we had 3,500 kids in our school system, or 13 years ago, with five schools. Today, we have six schools. We built a new one, a high school, and we have 2,600 students. So we have almost 1,000 less students than we had 12 years ago, and we have an extra school with over 100 rooms. So how we don't have the square feet for taking on these little kids, I don't know. But I think that we've waited long enough on this auditorium, and, you know, they're putting on great shows, and if they could sell out, you know, they'd make a lot more money, and, you know, they got the, you've got one of the best gyms in town. In Massachusetts, some school systems, at 3 o'clock when school is over, the recreation department takes over all the buildings, whether it's the auditorium or the gymnasium, all the sports fields. They, the recreation department actually puts out all the, you know, football programs. They have nothing to do with, the sports is separate from the education part of it. And this just gives us a good chance to, I know the wrestling's been in there, but, it'll give us a good chance to get everybody equal time, better time. And I think it's a good thing for the town. We postponed the $5 or $7 million that we should have spent 10, 12 years ago on a good auditorium, and now we, I think it's time to put that back in operation.
Thank you.
My name is Anne Marie Farron. I'm on 308 Ledge Road in Daville. I'm also an employee at EastCon, and I work part of my week at the building in 79 Westfield Ave. As a resident of Killenly, I think moving forward with the community center located is a good idea. There's many aspects that would benefit the town, as well as my family specifically. But as an employee of EastCon, I do have some reservations. The school located in this building is a behavioral school. It, all of the students ages 3 to 21 have IEPs with specific behavioral plans. These students are outplaced because they could not thrive in public school. This is not a public school, as you have stated. There is police involvement at least once a week, and many of the students have a flight risk, which means they choose to run out of the building without supervision. To share this space would be difficult and eye-opening for many of the members, many members of the community. Our staff does a wonderful job keeping these students safe, considering their specific behavioral needs. However, introducing the general population, even with the restrictions in place, may be a safety concern that many of you have not yet considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm in Leverage, 208 East Franklin Street. I think a lot of you have seen the ad on TV where the guy's standing there just throwing money out the window. And that's exactly what's going on at the community center now. The windows there are absolutely terrible, and in the winter, that's what the town's doing, which is throwing money out the window. And something has to be done. If anybody goes through that building, they know that a lot of work has to be done in there, and this move would be good for the town. And the longer we delay, the more costs are going to go up. I just had a lot of work done in my home, I'm going to have some more. And I said, "Well, gee, can we wait on this roof till spring?" And I was told, "No." Like every other month, the cost for the shingles and that are going up. So the time to get this project done is now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Mason, Director of Killenly Parks and Recreation, 143 Prospect Ave. I've worked in the community center now for over two decades. I've seen a lot of projects happen in that community center. We did purchase land at one point in time to expand the parking, which we now have about 26 parking spaces behind the building. We also have about another 25 or so across the street, High Street, and there is also Orange Street parking. However, when you figure what we do sometimes in the evenings, we'll have four basketball teams in there at the same time, so you're talking at least 40 players or parents. We have a cast that's rehearsing for a show, could be upwards 50, 60 people in that area. Two or three meetings going on with about 15 or 20 people. You can see where the parking issue might be a problem at this point in time. So we will program wherever we are at, whether it is at the current community center, whether we move to another building. Capital projects, as I stated, have happened. Gymnasium floors happened since my time being there, as well as the roof. But when we did get to the windows, which has been a major bone of contention for the town going back and forth with the community center, we at one point in time had had that in our capital project budget for the town. It was halted because of the discussions of this project happening. This discussion has probably been going on for about eight or 10 years now. This is the third or fourth time we have been in discussion in regards to this. And since then, there have not been much movement on the community center side of things because everybody continually wants to see this, or some people want to see this happen. So at some point in time, that decision really does have to be made, whether we do combine these two buildings, or whether we decide at that point in time that funding needs to be done for both buildings in order for both to survive. I can tell you, moving to the Westfield Ave site would provide excellent parking. The parking issue has caused some of our members to not come to a lot of our programs if they happen at night because they're scared of parking on Broad Street. Don't know if you've ever been by there in the evening, how fast cars do go at that point in time, especially when you have children. The Westfield Ave site would also allow us to have larger theater events. It would allow us to move our summer concert series indoors rather than canceling. We could also have larger events with the gymnasium space that exists there, as well as the cafeteria space. And those are all areas that the town could use for revenue resources by renting out to other groups in the area that need those type of spaces. It also has outdoor space that we could program with as well, which we do not have that at our current community center. Security, I know security is an issue in regards to the EastCon program, and I think that the town and those who have been involved have done a good job in trying to lessen whatever impact that may be. I would like to bring up the security issue that we do have at the community center at this point in time. We have a lot of different entrances and exits, and although we try to only have two open, we must have two open. One in the front of our building because of the parking, and one in the rear because that's where our handicap accessible is. It does not give you a good sight to know who is in your building, when they are coming in their building. The Westfield Ave project gives us a location to be able to know who is in there. So that is for security of not only the people who utilize our community center, but for the workers as well. Again, the window situation, it's, we talk about the heat, we talk about the cooling in the summertime. There have been times that offices have been as low as 40 degrees. There have been times they have been as much as in the 90s. Difficult working, not only for the staff who works there, but when we bring instructors in, and when we bring people into our programming, you know, that does make a decision whether they stay with us or they do come back. It's not only the windows that have that problem, antiquated heating system that needs to be addressed as well. So basically, what I'm saying is, we will program wherever you put us. But the, if anybody has listened to any of the informational meetings that we've put out there, we have discussed where your cost savings could be in regards to combining these two buildings. But again, I just stress that if this does not happen, we really need to then look at the cost to do something with both of these buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further comment?
My name's Dan Litke. I live in Brooklyn, but my two grandsons go to this school there in sixth grade and eighth grade. So I'd like to see this project move forward. You know, I just got done working for you guys up here in Killenly at the Memorial School, and I'd like to thank all you people for moving that project forward. I worked on the windows there. My grandson was going there then. That project really needs a serious upgrade. And I know Downs Construction, that's performing to do the work, I worked with them in Putnam at the job. They're a good contractor. So I'd like to thank all you people.
Thank you.
Chairman, I just wanted to let you know that we did receive one public comment via email, and that is an email, a public comment was submitted by Jan Rockwood at 147 Broad Street, Danielson, in favor of the project.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you once again. Dave Jarvis, I live in Brooklyn, community member here. Church is right across the street. Once again, like to stand to rise to highly recommend moving this project forward in the current climate. You're not going to get much cheaper money. You're not going to get any better in returning your investment than here and than now. I think if you're going to be successful with Parks and Recreation, then they need a space to be able to provide what's required and what is needed. We talk a lot about bringing back life to Main Street. Part of bringing people back to Main Street is having things for people to do, and the community center will provide that. If their kids are coming from school, they got an event a little bit after, it puts some time to go shopping, puts some time to get a meal, you know, building that in, and that's how you build for success. That's how you bring people back to the center of the community, is with a solid community center. You know, Putnam, Plainfield, Killenly, Brooklyn, we're all connected. And as mentioned previously, that community center in Putnam, it was a huge success. And I don't know if you saw on Facebook, the first meeting that they had, the rec room was full of people, full of seniors enjoying that brand-new space. So this is another classic example. If you provide the space, people will use it. People will come and will find creative uses to, creative ways to use it, and really engage the youth, and keep them involved doing the right things, going in the right direction. Out front, we have banners with the carpenters supporting this project, continuing to move Killenly forward. Because I do believe that Killenly is a rising star, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, that Killenly is going to be the place to be. And these kind of moves will continue to draw people in. The more programs we have, the more people be interested, and the more marketable the town becomes with people, with families. And for a town to survive, any movement to survive, you need family, you need youth, you need the next generation. And I think a move like this with the community center, employing local people and using tax funds to stimulate the local economy, there's no better way to get a better return than putting local people to work on local projects. So we're going to continue to back you, here to answer any questions as far as the market goes, and our ability to bring the project in on time and on budget, I think, is not questioned by anyone. So looking forward to the referendum vote next week, and fully supporting and bringing this across to finish this across the finish line. So once again, thank you for your time, appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lucy Now, I live on Jones Street in Danielson, which is right up the street from the community center, the old community center. My biggest concern is, what's going to happen to that old building? We have so many empty buildings downtown as it is, which, you know, I see that there are some renovations being done, but a lot of them just sit there, and the longer a building stands there, unattended, the more problems we have with people who just move in and don't pay rent, and it becomes more of a sore sight. So, that's my biggest question. What do we do with that building?
Thank you. I will say, in the past, that the town has received interest from different developers looking to see if we would sell the building. At the time, we were unable to because of the fact we were using it as a community center. Ms. Chlorio may be able to weigh in a little bit further on that. I do have one question in regards to that, Ms. Chlorio. What could the town do to secure that building if this project were to go forward, once we made the move into the Westfield Ave, if we did not have a buyer lined up yet?
So clearly, the town would, in knowing the timing of when the community center would be moving, we would be able to start marketing the property before we exit the property. So, the build time, the estimated time for relocation for this project would be approximately 18 to 24 months. So knowing that that would be the final outcome, we would be able to begin the marketing process. The town has, over the years that I have been here, even though the community center has not been on the market, we have been approached by a number of developers, very interested in the property. Most of the time, the interest is around housing, which the town is in critical need of housing at this point in time. There's insufficient apartments and houses on the market in order to meet demand, especially the increase in the labor market that we have within our community. So, we would be able to begin marketing it. Clearly, if the town, if we move the community center, and we still have not yet identified a developer for the property at that point in time, we would then fully secure the building. And we still have cameras operational at the building, so we'd be able to monitor the building. We would have, you know, regular checks-in, check-ins on the building, we want to make sure that it's secure, we want to make sure that people aren't getting in there and causing problems with the building. But, you know, really, the point would be to market it and get it ready, so that way, you know, when we transition out, we're really looking at transitioning a developer to the property.
Is there any further comment? Mr. Sarantopoulos, if you want to come back forward?
A couple of things I'd like to respond to. I don't know if the town manager was listening, but I gave her two names of the people that are running this show, okay? And they told me that they know that EastCon isn't a part of the statutory requirements, but they admit that that's educational, as well as anything else, that's taught in the Killingley system. And all you have to do is have a legislature request that that be a part of bonding, and it would qualify, okay? Mr. Dusso got up here. The state would only pay for 750 under that reimbursement thing, and that's why it was built at 750. You've got to talk to the chair. Air conditioning for that high school in the auditorium, that was appropriated 12, 15 years ago. I don't know why it was never completed. That's another big question. Listen, I've got all the empathy in the world for the recreation manager. Yes, it's true, parking's a problem, the windows are a problem, cooling's a problem. We spent money trying to fix the cooling in there. At least, we put that one in where, we didn't do it at the high school. But, these are no new problems. It's not as any more urgent right now as it was 20, 25, 30 years ago. And it seems to me that this council, the Board of Education, would do well, and they'd do a service to the community, if they checked out with legislators, as well as the state, and see if that doesn't qualify to be done as new. And, EastCon is a creative state agency, all right? Nonprofit. And they're teaching subjects, sort of like what EastCon operates, where one community can't afford to do it on their own, so it's shared responsibility. It's the same thing. It's as educational as anything else we're teaching in this community. And incidentally, we're paying top buck for EastCon, because they've got a monopoly on that sort of thing. And there's one more thing. I know that when you get up here to this podium, because I've sat over there, and somebody comes up to the mic and gives information, it's awfully easy for whoever's sitting there to say, no, it's this, and that's the end of it. So, do your duties. Thank you.
Ms. Chlorio, I don't know if you can speak to this, or we'd be better off asking Mr. Angeli. How much discussion has gone on with EastCon in regards to them being able to operate if we go forward with this?
So we've had extensive conversations. EastCon has been at the table every single time in evaluating. They were the ones that identified some of the additional security concerns, which we addressed within the program. We evaluated every piece along the way with EastCon, and they had, they were, it didn't impact their operational abilities.
Is there any further comment?
I just had a question, like a procedural question on the bond. I didn't see any room for a change order, and I'm not sure how that goes. Talking about projects that didn't get fixed, so I just was curious how that would go.
Can I answer that? So, a great question. So with every project, the Killingley authorizes the full estimated cost based on the conceptual design for the project. That is the maximum dollar amount that is appropriated and allowed to be spent on the project. So, we have contingencies built within this, because of course, it is only at conceptual design level at this point. So we have built-in contingencies, both on construction and on owner's side, so that way, should we encounter a change order, we have room within the budget in order to manage that. But, this, if the community were to approve this at referendum on the 16th, the $27.8 million is the maximum dollar amount that can be spent on the project.
Is there any further public comment? Ms. Chlorio, it may save him a second. I know we brought this up before, you and I have had this discussion over whether the town can sell this property or not, and what steps the town would have to go through in order to sell the Broad Street property.
Yeah, there was some talk about it being, if we, if new inherited people get to boot, and that they, it has to be used for education. Is that still, is that status?
So I've now reviewed that with two attorneys, with our last two attorney firms. Our current attorney firm has also concluded that the property can be, the town can sell the property, that there is a lot of, for a long time, there was a lot of conversation that there was a deed reversion clause, that if we didn't use it for education, that it then had to revert to the heirs of whoever donated, who donated it to the town. That's not the case. There is a deed restriction, which requires the town to use it for educational purposes. So we would have the ability to sell the property. There are steps the town would have to take, we would have to do, we would have to go through the Attorney General's office at the state level, but we do have the ability to dispose of the property.
Is there any further comment? Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Seeing no further comment, we will close the public hearing for item 7A, and we will move on to the regular town council meeting. It is currently 7:40 PM. I am calling the public, the regular town council meeting to order. At this point, I will, we will move on to the prayer. Mr. Wood, if you could open us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we again ask for wisdom and discernment on these many issues, and all of that we just heard even in this public hearing, that we would continue to have a servant's heart. And we pray this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For all call purposes, all council members are in attendance, except for Ms. Wakefield, who is absent with notification.
No, she's...
She's on now. So Ms. Wakefield is on remotely, Mr. LaPrade is absent without notification.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add a couple of items possibly to the agenda. I'd like to add item 15C, discussion of interactions with utilities with regard to downwires and closed roadways. And item 15D, that we, our attorney looked into the tax agreement with NTE.
Ms. Chlorio, my understanding is, correct me if I'm wrong, we have to have six members agree to adding an item to the agenda?
I'm just, I was just trying to see if I could find it quickly in your rules of order. The only notation I see here is that ordinances have to be approved by six, regular resolutions are by five, so I don't see a specific requirement around the addition of items to the agenda. So I believe that it is actually the majority of those present, not necessarily a supermajority.
Thank you. All right, so, Mr. Grandowski is looking to add two items to the agenda. The first one was, I believe was discussion of utility response. How did you word that?
Downwires and...
So I will ask the council members who are in attendance, and this includes you, Ms. Wakefield.
You need a second on that motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? Motion's been seconded by Mr. Lee. I will open up for discussion regarding adding this item to the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Wood?
Just out of curiosity, I'm not opposed by any means, but do we need the 24-hour notice to add things like this? No?
Not for a regular meeting. You can add items the night of the meeting.
Just wanted to double-check.
Thank you.
The reason I'm bringing this up, we've had a road closure for 24 hours, almost zero response from the phone company. You guys got to be aware of some of this stuff.
Right now, we're dealing with the first item. We're doing one at a time.
One at a time, okay, thanks.
Could that item just be discussed under council members' reports and stuff, to have
You should formally add something, add the item to your agenda if you're going to speak about a specific topic.
Correct, but I meant just in general, that subject under council members' reports.
Or it could come up during the town manager's report, because that is something that's been discussed.
Yep.
Okay, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of adding item 15C, discussion of utility response to downwires, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, we have now added item 15C to the agenda. Mr. Grandowski also made a motion to add item 15D, discussion regarding the NTE tax Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Motion has been seconded by Mr. Wood. I will open up for discussion. One thing I will say is, due to the fact we're discussing a binding contract, I would almost want to refer to the town attorney, if we should have the town attorney present. That way, we don't discuss anything that may breach the contract that is in place. Is there any further discussion?
I believe your request was just to have the attorney, to add an item so that the attorney would review it. But I think your concern is, just discussing it could cause us issues.
That would be my one concern, is bringing something up that we have a binding contract on.
Okay.
If it were, if we were going to do something like this, I would almost want to meet with the town attorney in executive session. That way, we're making sure that we're not breaching the contract and putting the town in a vulnerable position.
We could still have, we could still request that the attorney look at it without having the discussion here.
So the town, the town council doesn't necessarily have to have an agenda item to direct the town manager to have the, to request the town attorney to attend a subsequent meeting to discuss this, and have it added to the agenda. The council chair can do that.
Is there any further discussion? I will do a roll call vote on this one.
This is a roll call, to add it to the agenda, not, not whether you agree to have a review.
Yes, exactly, to add this to the agenda or not.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
No.
Mr. Kertula?
No.
Ms. George?
No.
Ms. Tick Barkley?
No.
Ms. Wakefield? Ms. Wakefield?
Tammy, can you unmute yourself, please?
We're going to have to bypass her as though she's not available.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Five to two, it fails.
Thank you. We'll now move on in the agenda to item five, adoption of minutes of previous meetings. Can I get a motion to adopt the minutes from the special town council meeting September 7th, 2021, and five B, regular town council meeting, September 14th, 2021?
I'll make that motion.
Addie George, I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion, corrections regarding these minutes. Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the minutes from the special town council meeting September 7th and the regular town council meeting September 14th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move on to item six, presentation, presentations, proclamations, and declarations.
You have none.
Thank you. We will now move on to item seven, unfinished, 7A, which actually I believe we have to wait until eight o'clock for the...
You do that, you have to do this before eight o'clock?
Before eight o'clock.
Otherwise, it doesn't go to special town meeting.
Okay, all right. So item 7A, unfinished business for town meeting action, consideration and action on ordinance to appropriate $27,800,000 for improvements to Westfield Avenue School and including renovations needed to serve as a community center and authorize the issuance of bonds and notes in the same amount. Can I get a motion to adopt this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Mr. Lee, seconded by Mr. Kertula. I will open up for discussion. Mr. Wood?
Just out of curiosity, I know, I think I know the answer, but just wanted to make sure. I know Mr. Serantopoulos has mentioned school reconstruction grants and things like that. I'm assuming even if passed, we're going to still be looking for any potential reimbursement, things like that. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Obviously, as we go along, if we find that the project is eligible for any grants, we would, you know, that wouldn't delay and cost the project, inflate the cost of the project, then we would pursue those. And we did, I did have, the superintendent and I were on the call with the Office of School Construction that outlined what was potentially eligible. And after reviewing the pieces and components that would be deemed eligible by Office of School Construction and evaluating that with the architect, along with the additional approval processes necessary for offices of school construction, $188,000 that the town would have received under those grants would have cost the town significantly more money in order to achieve that. So the recommendation to the council at the time, and I still stand by that, is to not pursue Office of School Construction grant funding unless those parameters change substantially. But at this point, we wouldn't pursue those, but we would seek any other alternative funding that might be eligible and see if we can get any funding in alternate means.
I'm all about our money coming back to our town. The other thing is, I'm just going to echo those security concerns that were brought up. You know, I could definitely respect it, especially since I have been there when there's been behavioral issues and had to transport people to the hospital. So I do, I definitely can understand those concerns, but I know it's been brought up in conversations past, presentations past, that that definitely seems to have been addressed as well. And as you've already stated even tonight, the East Con School is working closely with yourself and Mr. Angel as well. So it's actually good news to hear.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman Anderson, I will say, we've looked at this project in a lot of different ways, whether it's been discussed, not just this current council, but previous councils. Looking into doing a renovate is new at the Broad Street location. We've also looked into doing a build is new at a different location. So we've looked at different options of this. Financially, the one we felt that would be the best option would be this one that we've brought forward to the town for the town to vote on. The, to renovate is new, I believe the numbers would be roughly...
I included some information at your individual desks, just for those reminder points, as far as those numbers, because I figured you'd want to review those. So on that front comparison options, it does go over the renovate is new, also the, the build new. And then I was asked to detail out what additional potential funding uses there might be to lower the amount of mill rate impact. And so I've outlined those below. So if you want to go over those numbers, you know, you can, or if you want me to, that's fine.
I have no problem going over them. The, to renovate is new, at the existing, at the existing location on Broad Street, we would be looking at $27 million. Now, we took that into consideration, but the thing, if we were to do that, we would have also still had renovations that need to be done at Westfield Ave. We are, we do have a...
Tammy might be trying to just double check that she can be heard, so you might hear her pop on, because I was just making sure and checking the technical difficulties. I apologize, that's why I was texting. I was making sure that Tammy was still able to be connected.
So I'll go over this quick before we hit the eight o'clock. So to do a renovate is new at the existing location on Broad Street, we would be looking at $27 million. That does not address the issues we have at the Westfield Ave location, which we still would have to do renovations there. The roof would need to get replaced, the brick facade is falling off the back of the building, as well as having issues with windows. So the additional cost to do the renovations at Westfield, if we did a renovate is new, would be an additional $13 million, which would bring us to $40 million. If we were to build a new location, build a new building at a different location, the cost of that, which would not include purchasing a parcel of land or any site work required, you would be looking at $35 million to build a new building somewhere else. And we would still have an additional $13 million in renovations at Westfield. That would bring the cost up to $48 million. So the project that, that we decided to push forward to the town, for the town to vote on, was the one we felt made the most sense economically. We wanted to make sure that if we're spending taxpayers' dollars, that we're doing it wisely, and we felt this was the best scenario going forward. If we, if this doesn't go forward, we will still have to consider, if this doesn't pass at the townwide referendum next week, we would still have to consider what we're going to do for renovations at Westfield Ave at an additional time, and also consider what we're going to do with the Broad Street location. But this was what we felt would be, what made the most fiscal sense as far as moving this project forward.
I can make a motion that we vote on it?
I second that.
Okay. All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of adopting this ordinance, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the clerk only have to read the title of the ordinance and not the entire ordinance.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. It is now eight o'clock.
Public hearing of the town council shall be held pursuant to section 506 of the Killenley Town Charter in the town meeting room of the Killenley Town Hall, 172 Main Street in Killenley, Connecticut, on the ninth day of November 2021 at 7:00 PM, at which interested persons shall be heard upon the following proposed ordinance. Ordinance appropriating $27,800,000 for the improvements to Westfield Avenue School, including renovations need to serve as a community center, and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the same amount. We now would like to open nominations for moderator of the special town meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. Are there any more nominations?
I move nominations to be closed.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, I now like to turn the meeting over to Jason Anderson as moderator of the special meeting.
Thank you. So as was read earlier, this special town meeting is in regards to the community center project. At this time, is, if there is anyone who would like to come up and make further comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address. When it comes time to vote to send this to...
So when everyone, I'll just help you out a little bit here. So when everyone is concluded on making comments, the special town meeting is simply adjourned. There's no vote taken. It is just simply adjourned to the machine vote on the 16th. So no vote is taken during special town meeting. The mic is open to the floor for continued debate and conversation around the item. And then when the, you as moderator feel that that has completed, it would then close the special town meeting, adjourning it to a machine vote.
Thank you. So anyone who would like to speak to this, any further comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Lynn LaBerge, 20 East Franklin Street. Would this be something like a vote for the budget, so anyone who has any assessed property, $1,000 can vote on this? Thank you.
Yes, that is correct. So this is open to not just registered voters, but anyone that has assessed property of $1,000 or more on the most recent grant list can vote on the, on this capital project. The referendum will be held on the 16th at the library, the community room in the library, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Last call for comment. Seeing none, the special town meeting is adjourned. It will be adjourned to a machine vote at the high school, or excuse me, at the town library on November 16th.
6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. At this time, we will now reconvene the regular town council meeting.
If I may really quickly, absentee ballots are available for this capital project vote. They will be available at the town clerk's office starting tomorrow morning. We can't do mails. Sorry, I'm trying to get my town clerk over here, is reminding me. So you cannot do mailed absentee ballots. In order to get your absentee ballot, you'll have to come to the town clerks, or Liz, they can send a designated person to the town clerks to receive their absentee ballot and do that for them, but it has to be transactioned here at the town hall. So absentee ballots are available tomorrow morning.
Thank you. So we are reconvening the regular town council meeting. We are moving on to item eight on the, on the agenda, citizen statement and petitions. Ms. Chloery, did we have any statements for the regular town council meeting?
We did not receive any email statements for the town council meeting.
Thank you. So we will open up. If anyone would like to speak to anything, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Adam Reynolds, five Fance Road. First thing, I want to congratulate everybody that won the election. I think pushing everybody to come out and have an awesome crowd for voting is just always positive for the town, no matter which way it goes. And I'm grateful for all that. But as far as not talking about the power plant, I think that's absolutely crazy. I mean, we have a power plant, we have a contract with, as far as I'm concerned, I understand they want, we have a contract for a 550-megawatt plant, but they want to build a 650-watt megaplan. So we don't even have like the right size plants going in. And then on top of it, we have addition that NE that was going to transport this power to the power plant, has even backed out of it. So now we're going to build a power plant that has no way of getting the power out. So what are we building? Just a tailpipe for all of us to kind of toke on? Like, kind of trying to figure it out here. Like, what are we doing? Why, we're going to spend $27 million on a school and then put a power plant next to it. Has anybody seen that picture? You know, smoke pouring into everybody else? I mean, this is just absolutely crazy. Let's spend lots of money on schools and then jam up our plant right next to it. So the fact that we shot this down to deep and discuss this is just terrible. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up on the agenda is item nine, council and staff comments.
What I would comment back to Mr. Reynolds' comment is that we may not be building a power plant because it hasn't fully been approved. It's still got steps to go through. As far as what Mr. Grandowski had wanted to do with the tax agreement, you mentioned that can be done with just the request of the chairman. And that's all that I think Mr. Grandowski was asking for, was to review the tax agreement. So it's not like we said we're not going to do it. It can be done without an agenda item.
I agree with Mr. Kertula. My big concern with not discussing, having any discussion regarding an existing contract during public meeting is, without having a town attorney present, my concern would be if someone said something that could go against what the terms of the agreement are, that could be considered a breach of the contract. I am aware that in the existing tax agreement that the town has with NTE, that it says the town will not oppose the project. So my concern would be if something were said during a council meeting that could be construed as opposition of the project. I wouldn't want the council member creating an issue for the town regarding this agreement. Mr. Lee?
And that's the way I looked at my vote. I just didn't want to discuss it here. I didn't disagree with having it looked at, just not here in public where we might get ourselves into trouble. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I agree with Ernie. It's not that we don't want to have it done, but we have to be very careful what we say about the project. And going to the attorney to review it is the best. So I'm sure you're going to do that, right? Forward it to the attorney.
I will have Ms. Chloery talk with the town attorney.
Okay, thank you.
I've been so tasked.
Ms. Barkley?
And it's not the town that's building the power plant. It was the state's citing council that looked at Killenley, so the town didn't have any, any choice in the matter. The town is not building the power plant.
I will clarify slightly on that. It was the citing council didn't pick Killenley for the power plant. It was NTE that picked Killenley for the power plant. As far as the town having no say in it, the citing council does have final decision. I will say, there was discussion that had been brought up years past prior to anyone that's here being on the council other than Mr. Grandowski and I believe Ms. Wakefield was, might have been on at the time, regarding what the town's ability is to say no to a facility like this. The previous town manager repeatedly had told the town council that the town council's opinion doesn't matter because they can't stop it. Unfortunately, he was very misinformed, and he had misinformed the council that was... Unfortunately, he was very misinformed and he had misinformed the council that was present back then. I can say this with all certainty because I've had discussions with Melanie Bachman, who is the executive director of the citing council. The fact that certain things that went on before were part of the reason why I decided to run for council back in seventeen. So I, that being said, the citing council does have final say whether it comes or not. However, the citing council did not pick Killenly. And the, unfortunately, the town council cannot, or the town cannot say no to the facility because the citing council does have final say. My opinion regarding that is I look at what the citing council has control over. One thing I would love to see happen would be a change in how the citing council handles a facility like this. If it was a hazardous waste facility, it wouldn't be a nine-member citing council panel. You would have thirteen members and four people, or excuse me, three people would be from the community where it was going to be cited. I would love to see a change to where if there's any power plants coming through anywhere else to where there are the, I believe it's called ad hoc members from the community that serve for that one facility. But that is something that would have to get changed at the state level. I would also like to see, because looking at this whole process, whether you support NT or not, I do feel the hoops NT had to jump through made it extremely difficult for them to fulfill their obligations to ISU New England, who is the grid. By NT having to clear the, for capacity auction first prior to being able, using that as demonstrating a need for the facility and then having to go through the process to get the approval from the citing council, that, that makes it extremely difficult for a power plant to then meet its deadlines, the obligations it has with the grid. If, if a facility is absolutely needed and they can demonstrate a need for that, I don't feel that it should be, it should hinge on clearing auction as to whether you're gonna be able to sell your power or not. If we were having brownouts in the area and we absolutely needed a power plant and they ran into these deadlines, I think it would create an issue for a power plant coming through. It's not to say I'm supporting or against NT. I just think that the citing council process should get looked at and revamped. I would love to see local communities have more say in what's coming into their town. Sorry if I got long-winded on that. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will move on to item ten, appointments to boards and commissions, and we have none. Moving on further, item eleven is reports from liaisons. Board of Ed liaison, we do not have and the superintendent is no longer here. So we will move on to Borough Council Liaison. Ms. LaBerge, if you would come forward, please.
And we have to check with the state library about regulations for saving the video from the cameras. If, see if footage can be saved to the cloud, if a clip has to be made in an incident and get that sent out. And the last thing that's gonna have to be done is the council will be getting email addresses soon. So we'll each have an email address because it's been a couple of times where we've been doing things for the Borough and we've been using our personal email, which isn't a good thing, especially if somebody pulls an epauleya on you and asks for stuff. They're gonna see all your personal stuff also. The LED lighting project in the firehouse has had to be put on hold because of supply problems with the materials that are needed. So whenever they finally come in is when that will get done. We're gonna be holding a public meeting on Wednesday, December first at the firehouse at seven o'clock for the opera regulations. This will be in person and also through Zoom. And it will explain the program, what you can use it for. And the charter revision focus group is gonna meet sometime in the beginning of next year to see if it's really necessary for us to open the charter. And one of the things if we do, they want to check with the state because we would be having our elections in May of twenty twenty-three and to be able to work the timeline backwards to make sure if any questions had to be put on the ballot that it would be done in, in time of the year.
Thank you very much. Moving on in the agenda, item twelve, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports, twelve A. Can I get a motion to adopt the summary report on general fund appropriations for town government? I'll make them all.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Grandowski. Discussion. Ms. Grandowski?
I guess under registration, elections. Driving around and looking at the signs for the election last week, the vote Tuesday just doesn't cut it. I guess that budget comes out of the highway department, not so much out of the registration or the registrar's office. But then looking toward the referendum, we've got more information out regarding the referendum for next week than the election for this body. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to item twelve B, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports. Can I get a motion to adopt the system object based on adjusted budget for the Board of Education?
Patty George, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Ms. George, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Discussion. Mr. Grandowski?
I mean, we need to have someone from the Board of Education come on board. I mean, it's kind of... Are we, are we a body that doesn't require any interaction with the Board of Education? I mean, they have a humongous budget. How do we interact with them? How does the public, if they want to come to the podium, react with them? It's just very disheartening. Thank you.
I do understand that. I have had conversations a couple of times as far as getting a liaison here from the Board of Ed. I will have that conversation again. I do know with having new members elected, hopefully we can get a little more consistency as far as having a liaison here. I will always bring any questions or comments the council has for the Board of Ed. I will bring them forward to the next Board of Ed meeting when I'm there as a liaison. So if you have any specific comments or questions, feel free to either say them now, email them to me before I attend the next Board of Ed meeting.
Further comment is knocking on doors and whatnot. It was, they like the town council because if someone would come to the podium, there wasn't a back and forth, but at least there was a response during the meeting. And they says, why do I want to even go to a Board of Ed meeting when there's no response? And a lot of people say, because I want the response out on TV. I don't want, I get it back. It's hidden. They're hiding behind closed doors. And this was by quite a few people making that comment. But they're blaming me. And that's the problem. And I have to tell them, it's, it's not a council issue. It's not my issue. It's a Board of Education issue that there's no return comment during public participation. If you want to call it that.
Thank you. I will definitely pass that comment on to them and see if there's a way they can address that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to item thirteen, correspondence communications reports, thirteen A, town manager report. Ms. Gloria, if you could go over this, please.
Sure. So I condensed some of the county information. I just showed the hospitalization rates as opposed to the total numbers. Those numbers, I wanted to make sure it was meaningful information that I'm giving to you. And I also did include Killenly's specific case counts. So we have seen a growing increase in COVID nineteen transmission throughout the community. We are seeing now an average of about eleven point six cases daily. And you'll see on the chart that I gave you, for whatever reason, isn't in your packet. I apologize. I thought it was in here. The daily, the daily counts, we did see some spikes up into about thirty or so cases on a given point, and that was really because it was over a weekend. So when you average that out, we're still averaging about between ten to twelve cases per day. So that number has increased slightly from the last month. Last month, we were averaging between nine to ten cases per day. So that case count has increased slightly. Doesn't mean that we've changed operations in any way. I, you know, I am reminding staff to make sure you're disinfecting your spaces. And, you know, we just continue to encourage that social distancing. That being said, the OSHA has just issued their emergency temporary standard that may impact vaccination requirements within all employers that have a hundred or more employees. So I'm evaluating that emergency temporary standard to see its impact on Killenly and our, and our employees. So I, I will be evaluating that and determining what steps Killenly may or may not need to take under that order. So that may provide some, some change. I did include with your packet also the vaccination rates. And again, month over month, we are still continuing to see more vaccination percentages in each category and each age group. So we are seeing continuing, people to continue to get vaccinations. Call Before You Dig, Councilor Grandowski had asked about if there was an additional fee for the Call Before You Dig system in and above the cost for our third-party locator that we are, that we are contracted now with. So I reviewed that with the town engineer's office and went on to the Call Before You Dig system and evaluated what their requirements are. There is a, there is a one dollar fee per email for notification. That is built into our third-party fees. So our third-party locator will get that bill from Call Before You Dig, but they've built it into our rates. So we're not gonna get a separate bill from Call Before You Dig. It's all rolled into one. So I just wanted to respond to that inquiry on that. For the tax sale, so we have performed over the years, several tax sales over the years. This is the, the final way and the final step, I will say, in which the town looks to seek to recoup back taxes is a, is a tax sale. We held one on November third. The town collected approximately two hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. There was a total of nineteen properties that were sent to tax sale. The vast majority of those were what was considered redeemed, meaning the property owner paid all back taxes prior to tax sale date. So there were only twelve properties that actually went to tax sale on, on November third. And, and we had nine of those properties actually sold, two were, didn't receive any bids. So they'll hold over to a, a future sale. Our last tax sale the town held was in two thousand and eighteen. We've typically held tax sales at least every other year, depending on the volume of what we have. Sometimes we've held them annually. So we did have a bit of a stretch in time only because we would have done it at the, you know, in the springtime of twenty twenty. Clearly COVID wasn't gonna allow us to perform that. So this was really the first opportunity that we had to be able to perform that auction type because it is really an auction sale that occurs. Adam Cohen from Pullman and Conley is the one that performs that auction. And anyone that bid on that or purchased a property in tax sale, they have, they don't, that property doesn't transact for six months. So the property owner still has an additional six months to redeem their property before it actually transacts and that deed is then converted to the new owner. So that, that took place. We did with regards to the Killenly intermediate school, the highway department and myself worked very closely with the superintendent and the principal and staff at the KIS property to address the high traffic volume that we had during drop-off and pickup, to reroute that traffic pattern within the school grounds to allow for more parent vehicles to actually get access onto the property and stage on the property rather than backing up onto Upper Maple and onto one oh one. So that change took place, and I think you have the map here in your... Yes, you do. You have the map of the new configuration that our highway department put together. That is the new configuration for the parent and the, and the bus lines. I wanted to give kudos to our highway department and Matt Doobie, our highway director, in really being able to help with creating these maps. And also they redid all the signage on the school property to make it very clear for parents and for buses. And spent a pretty good amount of time in a short, short period of time in order to be able to get this accomplished for the school. So it was a great, it was a very good collaborative effort. And I understand that, so this came into effect November third is when they started this new pattern. And I understand that it's now everybody's starting to get into the flow of it and it seems to be working well. We're not really having the stack up on one oh one and Upper Maple Street nearly as much. Drop, pickup is still a bit more cumbersome and that's just because we have parents that are arriving an hour before, before students are actually released. And as with parent pickup, you know, you have a bunch of cars. You have to identify which kid goes in which car. It's not as easy as when parents are rolling up to drop off. They're dropping a kid off that's gonna run into the school, whereas with pickup, you gotta make sure that the right kid is getting to the right vehicles. And that takes more time to make sure that that's happening. So they're getting into a good flow now, and I think that that has definitely alleviated that significant traffic congestion that was occurring on one oh one and Upper Maple Street. So that's a positive. And then I wanted to give to you the law enforcement statistics. So these are the, the last five quarters of calls, total volume calls. So the total calls for all of Killenly are listed in, you see that in the, in the green column, the very far column. The blue column is all of the calls that are handled by our officers, Killenly, our Killenly police officers, as well as our assigned resident state troopers, right? So our, our team of eight takes those calls. And last quarter, our, our, our crew handled a third of the overall calls. You know, over a thousand calls in that quarter. So, and I know that they've been handling more complex investigations throughout this time period as well. So we are definitely seeing that growing trend. And one thing you will note that with having one of our officers being assigned as a student resource officer, his call volume is very low because while he interacts and is an integral part in managing incidents that are happening at the school, it doesn't mean that they're getting case counts because they're not, they're not dispatching individually for that. And so those numbers aren't necessarily reflective in here. So really, when you're looking at, you know, the first quarter of twenty-one, twenty-two for calls, you really gotta reduce one person out of, you know, recognize that that's really, instead of eight people, that's really divided off of seven individuals because McCusker is dedicated mostly to the schools. He does do patrol when the schools are not in session. He does do patrols. But his case counts don't necessarily reflect in here. So just trying to give you that overall picture. And then I did provide some graphs.
Thank you. I do have one question. Looking at the graph, looking at the... Thank you. I do have one question, looking at the graph, looking at the amount of calls for service for the first quarter of twenty-one, twenty-two compared to twenty to twenty-one. It looks like it's roughly about five hundred more calls, which looks to be a substantial increase. I see that you attended the law enforcement council meeting. Any discussion there as to, that came up that might explain the increase in calls of service, other than possibly more people out now after COVID?
Yeah. So I think all of, all law enforcement across the board has been seeing an increase in calls. There's a lot more, I don't want to say minor, but there, people are more readily wanting to call the police and, and bring police into interactions. So they do have a lot more call volume. And there's also been more motor vehicle. A lot more people are out on the roads, and they've been trying to do, you know, more enforcement. So it's kind of a combination. There, you know, they have, they definitely, across the law enforcement, and I'm sure in EMS they see this as well, there's a, there's a lower tolerance level, just in general. People have a much lower tolerance level, and they're just far more, they're easily triggered to escalation. And so law enforcement has been brought in more frequently because of that fast escalation on things. So it's not necessarily that we are, you know, having, you know, a, a big crimes wave or anything like that. Nobody's really seeing that. It's really, you're, what we really see in these calls, and I can give you a, a different breakdown, is what's considered non-reportables, which is means they have, you know, somebody's having, you know, a dispute with a neighbor or whatever. It's, it's, it's not a felony, it's not a larceny, they're not arresting people or anything like that. It's really moderating a situation. And that's, that's the vast majority of those calls. And then that's what you're really seeing.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? Mr. Wood?
Just to, just to add a little bit more to what the town manager just said, I could tell you that back in about May, June timeframe, March even, March, April, I was sitting around twiddling my thumbs because, I mean, I wait till people call nine-one-one, you know, I'm, I'm there for their worst days sometimes. And same thing for our law enforcement. COVID is what did that, but we have seen, especially in the last six months, a dramatic increase in call volumes, fire, EMS, police, we've all, all seen it. So, you know, that, that's definitely part of it. And as the town manager has alluded, our police officers sometimes have to play, if you will, referee between neighbors, and God bless them for it. So there's definitely an increase throughout. I know my slowest days lately have been doing about five calls a day. So as, and that's in a twelve-hour shift.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is fourteen unfinished business for town council action, and we have none. So we'll move on to fifteen A, new business consideration and action on a resolution regarding the use of federal fiscal year twenty-twenty-one state homeland security grant funding and custodial ownership of regional assets in DEMHS Region Four. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Cottula. I will open up for discussion. Ms. Gloria, if you could go over this, please.
Sure. So this is an annual resolution that we need to do. So Killingley participates in custodial ownership of a number of assets that are DEMHS Region Four assets that we host here in Killingley. We have message signs, light towers, some of the, some heavier equipment as well. The town gets a lot of benefit from being able to have those. For instance, we were able to use the light towers on, on voting on election day to be able to make sure we're illuminating that area properly. We also use the message board signs on a regular basis. Those are also allow us, by participating in this program, it also allows us to have those assets within our community and be able to activate them during an emergency very quickly, right? So we have a really good relationship with the other communities around here that also participate in this custodial asset program. And we've been able to activate a number of resources very quickly because we, we are also a host community to this. So that, the town doesn't have to pay anything with regards to purchasing or even some of them, some of the upkeep to some of the equipment. We have to pay it, basically, we have to cover it with our insurance, which is a very minor impact to our overall insurance. So it's a great benefit to the town. It's a great opportunity to have resources that we wouldn't otherwise necessarily be able to afford to pay for individually, but we can cooperatively use them with the region. They slightly change the resolution almost every year. And so, you know, that's why we have to go back. And basically, what this resolution does is that the town council is authorizing the town manager to sign the, the agreement. It's what it is.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions, comments from council? Seeing none, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to item fifteen B, consideration and action on a resolution, resolution authorizing the transfer of program income from infrastructure to facilities and housing. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cottula and seconded by Mr. Wood. Ms. Gloria, if you could go over this, please.
Sure. So this is within our small cities community grant program. We have currently forty-one thousand dollars in program income in our infrastructure and commercial renovation. So this is infrastructure, think sidewalks, that type of infrastructure. And the program itself only allows us to have, in order for us to continue to receive grant money, we can only have no more than thirty thousand dollars of program income available to us. How do we get this program income? Essentially, throughout, through the program, as we do projects and we place liens on properties for those projects, when the, when the properties transact, when they sell, they have to pay off that lien. That money comes back into the program. That's how we have program income. So it's not residual grant money. It's money that's returned back to the program from the projects that were done. Typically, we have to use that return money on the same, the same thread of what the, what, the same type of project is what it was originally spent on, what that grant was, was originally spent on. We've had a lot of transactions lately with properties, and so there's been a lot more returned back into the fund. In order for us to be able to go for additional grants, maximum we can have in there is thirty thousand dollars. We have forty-one thousand. We have two projects that are in dire need of, of funds utilization that qualify in different categories of program income. So there's several categories of program income. The money that we have, the forty-one thousand, is in infrastructure and commercial renovation. We are looking to move twenty-five thousand of it to public facilities specifically for the domestic violence shelter. The septic system needs to be replaced at that facility. It is, that facility is slated for a larger renovation, a larger rehab, and that rehab program has deemed the replacement of the septic system ineligible. So we felt that this would be a great utilization of that infrastructure monies, to be able to utilize it for the replacement of that, of that septic system. The other one is sixteen thousand to go for public housing modernization, and that is for additional costs with Birchwood Terrace Rehab, the Birchwood Terrace Housing, Housing Authority projects. We, so we would be looking to move the sixteen thousand to there. Again, it really aligns most closely with that infrastructure. It's projects, you know, we've been looking to try and complete the projects at Birchwood Terrace with the modernization. So this is modernizing the efficiencies within the individual units themselves and modernizing those units. They, they were long overdue, and so we need to be able to complete that project. And so we're looking to move the remaining six, sixteen thousand there. That leaves about three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars left in that infrastructure account. And to be honest, that allows us, gives us, puts us in a good position to be able to apply for grants for additional housing, the additional public housing modernization. So I know our housing, our housing authority needs to do additional work within the housing authority complex. This would put us, put us in a good position to be able to move forward and seek additional grants. And Mary Brahm is here. If anybody has any additional, more detailed questions that I can't answer, she is the guru of these projects. So I know when I'm outmatched for information.
Should we suspend the rules and allow Mary Brahm to speak on that, or do you feel she's covered it all?
Have I covered it all, Mary? Okay.
Any questions, comments from council?
We can use any, any grant money that we can get. We, we gotta, that was another comment going out, knocking on doors. Can you get more grant money?
We need to spend some of this first.
Well, no, I, well, that's, it's good to bring that out, that people see that we have something to spend.
Yeah.
And maybe they can come forward and, you know, apply for it and whatnot. So it's good.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to item fifteen C, which is the added item, discussion of utilities' response for downed power lines. Mr. Grandowski, since this is something you wanted added, I will give you the floor to bring up the concerns you have.
Yeah. Yesterday and last night is an absolute nightmare. The town is liable for keeping the roads closed. But in the case of yesterday, highway department was not even aware that they were down wires. It just happens in front of my house at the lake. So I have a vested interest in that. I guess the original call came in around eleven o'clock. There was an accident. My wife said in front of the house, I tried to go up, I saw the road block, you said, didn't do anything. Three o'clock in the afternoon, I go up there to see if the wires were ripped off the house. There's a road closed ahead at Kiss. There's a road closed ahead at the lake. There's a road closed ahead at Laurel Point. There was absolutely nothing at the area where the wires are down, the poles are dangling. So I went over to saw, and they were not in the loop. I, I don't know why we're not in the loop. And that's kind of why I want to bring this up. So I went over to the highway garage. Of course, they're ready to leave. So they got cones up. So we did what we were supposed to do, but trying to get Frontier to do something. So I'm back there this morning, and the cars are driving through the cones, actually scraping the cones. They're too lazy to even get out, but they're driving through the cones, scraping their car and all this and that. And somehow, again, town liability. So finally, a resident trooper shows up. Somebody tries to drive by there. And then eventually, a Frontier guy drives up. Well, it turns out the Frontier is on the construction crew. He was at the site when the car was flipped over. He was so inept, he didn't even not, he did not even know it was a Frontier pole that was hit. So Frontier did not know they had any responsibility. And then it took Mary calling this morning, everybody, you know, it, it was just a farce. So in addition, when I get there this morning, I, I call QV Dispatch. They're out to lunch. Sorry, but they're, they're out to, no, nothing. Call State Troop D. Oh, we know nothing about it. Nobody called transportation at the school. They knew nothing that the road was still closed. So we got some issues with the other agencies. I mean, we did what we had to do with the information that was given to us. So I, I gotta, you know, but where are these other people? When they left the site, the scene, the wires were dangling. Is, is anybody not responsible? Had somebody hooked it, they'd have pulled stuff off of my house. They would have probably pulled, matter of fact, the telephone wires are hope, holding up one of the poles that are broken. Even last night, they had a, a telephone guy in a van who would do your, he would repair, come to your house to repair. They sent him out to oversee the, the situation. He put two blue flags on the low-hanging wires in the southbound lane, just because that's all he could do. That was beyond his. So I, 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 I don't know, I, I'm, it's just ridiculous that, the comedy of errors that was going on. And finally, today, at ten o'clock, they hooked the wires up, but everything is still dangling out there. That's all they did was take the wires, put them up. The pole's still, two poles are broken in the same, because the replacement pole that they put up a year ago with the new power lines, and then they never, the phone company never got to put their new, their lines on the new pole. So the brand-new pole's broken, the old one's broken. I don't know where we can put pressure on. I didn't have time to call Pira today. I would, I would have done that. But, and like I said, you, when I talked to you this morning, we're trying to get, and Frontier is just not responsive. It's, it's just, so if this is what we have to look forward to in the wintertime with issues, and there's outages, I mean, this was, no one lost their power, no one lost their cable, no one lost their phone. But the wires were dangling because the, the way the pole bent, it was in the direction of the houses. So kind of that's where I'm coming from to try to, I don't know where, you know.
I know we, we discussed this earlier. I did reach out to the town manager. We discussed this earlier. One question I have is, is there any accountability as far as timeframe that the utilities are required to come out and do repairs? Any accountability for the oversight of who owned the pole and Frontier, in a sense, dropping a ball on that one and prolonging all of this?
So for Eversource, there is a lot more oversight and there is pressure there. When it comes to telecommunications, not so much. There's not really as much pressure or ability to put pressure on the telecommunications companies. And we've experienced that for years. Whenever we've tried to get a Frontier pole relocated or moved or taken out, you know, it's almost an act of Congress in order to have that happen. This instance, apparently, I did do a lot of discussion with Frontier and called Eversource because I wanted to find out what Eversource is, because Eversource was the first one that had to secure their lines first and then the telecommunications company. And so I talked to our Eversource liaison, and they did pull out the communication that they had to Frontier, which gave Frontier a ticket number. Unfortunately, the Frontier person that showed up that night cleared the ticket out of the Frontier system and closed it, as though it were, it was done. And so Frontier didn't know about it anymore. Frontier thought it was closed and done. So it was a lot of miscommunication with this one. It truthfully was. You know, when I contacted Frontier first thing this morning, I, they hunted through their system, didn't find anything, immediately put it in. Within less than a half an hour, I had gotten a response from Frontier saying that they were sending somebody out. And I want to say, within about an hour, we started to see activity out on the scene. Our, our, our officer, Jahola, went out to deal with traffic and to manage the traffic out on the site as we were waiting for Frontier and trying to figure out when Frontier was coming. So typically in a, in a response like this, when it's an accident situation, Eversource is the first one to be brought on to scene because typically there's, there's power wires involved as well. They secure, and then Eversource is the one that makes the communication to the telecommunications companies. So Eversource is the one that communicates and puts the ticket number in to, directly to the construction teams at, at the communications company. Unfortunately, the one that we ran into, you know, this event that just occurred, the
Unfortunately, the one that we ran into, you know, this event that just occurred, the telecommunications person that went out initially that night, A, closed the ticket, but B, didn't bother to get close enough to the pole to real, to acknowledge that it was a Frontier pole. So, he put in the system that it was an Eversource pole and tried to point it back to Eversource. So, it, that was very challenging, and I have spent a good portion of the morning having very pointed conversations with Frontier around this response and, and the, how unacceptable this response was. The government liaison that I, that we have as a contact has assured me that they have taken steps to remedy this, and we should not see this reoccur in the future. But at least I, you know, in, in one of the things that we did find with this exercise was that the emergency liaison that we have with Frontier was actually responsive. That's something that we have not necessarily had good communications with in the past. I wish we hadn't had to, we had known about this, you know, twelve hours before, so we could have had them come out last night. And I encourage everyone that, you know, when you, when you encounter a situation like this, and it seems to be going on for a very prolonged, and I'm not talking about during a weather event, you know, we all have, it's, when it's prolonged with Eversource and a weather event, that's going to happen. But when there's an accident like that, and there's wires hanging or drooping somewhere, and it doesn't seem like anybody's responding to that, call us here at Town Hall, call me, let me know. I can, I can get ahold of the, the more direct liaisons with the, with those companies to see if we can get it remedied and fixed. So many times, what happens is, is the initial scene is cleared, Troop D wipes it off of their system, not wipes it off, but they, they acknowledge it is closed. They're no longer attached to it any longer. They've identified it as a closed scene. Eversource, when they're done with it, they identify it as a closed scene. If you have, like this, if you have one person that shows up and they say, well, yeah, I'm from Frontier, but it's not me, I can't do it, and they log themselves off of that ticket, they very well could close that ticket out, not necessarily meaning that they meant to do that, but they can very easily close the ticket out in the corporate system, and then nothing happens. And nobody know, you know, I don't necessarily drive up and down Upper Maple Street every single day. I wouldn't necessarily know that that was still sitting out there, you know, at seven or eight o'clock last night, you know? So, the phone call to me to say, hey, everybody else is cleared, this is all they've left us with, gives me the opportunity to make those phone calls and say, wait a minute, timeout, this is unacceptable. Somebody needs to get out here, and somebody needs to deal with this now. So, they were very responsive once I was able to make those phone calls and say, timeout, you've really messed up. They were supposed to be sending out a crew from Waterford later on this afternoon to replace the poles. So, I have to go and check to see if they've gotten to the actual pole replacement. If they haven't...
It hasn't happened yet.
I didn't think so. Tomorrow...
They put a splice, they put a splice from one piece of the pole...
To the other.
...to the other piece, that, if we go to Snowstone tomorrow...
We're going to lose it.
Right.
So, I will follow up with my liaisons again tomorrow morning to say, okay, you've put in a temporary hold, that's not going to be a permanent fix. I want to know when the permanent fix is happening, right? And so, I can start pushing them on that side. But yeah, I mean, you know, Councilor Grandowski has called Pura several times with regards to Frontier and Atlantic Broadband. You know, they, sometimes they're responsive to that. But yeah, that, that's, so typically, when it comes to a downed wire or an accident impact, usually, the communication is much smoother. I think really what it boiled down to was that Frontier individual showed up. I think it was anticipated that that was going to remedy the situation from Frontier, because Frontier was on scene. That's what everybody collectively heard from all the other agencies, Frontier is on scene, and then Frontier disappeared off scene and didn't remedy the situation to anybody's satisfaction, to make it passable even. And so, and didn't communicate to anybody. That was where the breakdown of communication was. Didn't communicate to anybody to say, oh, wait a minute, I can't handle this, it needs to continue to be secured while we get different crews out. That was the break in communication there. So, that was really unfortunate and frustrating, absolutely frustrating and unacceptable.
But then again, with Frontier keeps saying they weren't advised, the guy with the van was there, and he's telling me after dark, so he's in communication with his boss, who has to call, they're on the, I forget which side, he's going back to the construction side today, hey, guys, there's still a problem, then try to call Frontier. You have to give them your phone number.
Right, I understand that, and that's where...
And they, and I argued with the woman, I says, look, yeah, I got to give you my phone number, that phone is two miles away, but I have a pole broken in front of my house, and your wires are dangling. We were on the phone for forty-five minutes, again, eight o'clock last night. So, they were, they can't say that they weren't notified, that, that's...
Agreed.
Right, right.
They weren't...
All the way, they had more ample time, and, and this is a joke that was out there now, it's just absolutely insane.
Yeah, Eversource originally called in the, the wires to Frontier at twelve fifteen yesterday. I have their ticket number.
Okay, good.
I have everything from Eversource. I called our Eversource person to say, tell me exactly how this went down. And so, they, they have their log. Twelve fifteen was when they called Frontier to notify Frontier they needed to come out, and clearly that, you know, it, it just, it, it didn't go smoothly. And we strive to try and make it go smooth every single time. That one was not smooth.
But the problem is, if somebody would have got hurt, if, if, if I didn't go by there to check my house at three, and there were no barriers at the site, because the road is somewhat blocked, we're on the hook, right?
I don't know that that's necessarily the case. So, Frontier would definitely be in line of liability. It is their infrastructure.
I like your, I like your line of thinking.
Right? So, it is their infrastructure, they did have notification of it, it was an accident scene, so they would be in line of liability. To say that the town wouldn't be in line of liability, the town always ends up in line of liability somewhere, like they, you know, when somebody's going to sue, they're going to sue everybody, everybody that could potentially be in line. So, you know, could we potentially see something? Yes, but you know, it's, it's Frontier's, it's Frontier's infrastructure, they were notified, there's evidence of those tickets. It would ultimately, you know, fall into Frontier.
But the...
But yes.
Idiot, idiot, and I'm, I'm going to say it, I don't care if people hear me say and call them that, idiots running through the cones, they're down, you can see the downed wires, and they will go around and whatnot.
We run into that every storm.
Oh, my God.
Every time that we close a road.
Yep.
Every time there's a wire down and we close a road, inevitably, people will drive around it, ignore the cones, drive over the cones, steal the cones.
Yes, oh, yeah, they did that, too.
We've seen them all. Yeah, we've seen, we've seen it all, and you know, we, every time I do the public announcement of a reminder, it's out there for your safety. You know, when you see a wire down, you can't just assume that it doesn't have power to it. You can't assume that it is not a deadly wire sitting there, and driving over it with your car is not, it's not safe, that your, your tires on your car do not prevent you from serious danger and injury. So, we continue with that message and continue to remind people, people still do it.
And the reason I'm, I'm bringing this up, because thirteen years ago, someone on a motorcycle drove over live wires, and he's not with us today. And we were in a lawsuit for seven or eight years over that. So, I...
But... I guess my only real question, because I don't disagree with anything you're saying here. My only real question when it comes down to the town for liability, I know we did this back at the fire department, if we had to close down a road, we would take pictures and make sure that we document it well, that, you know, at this time, this was done, attach those pictures to the report. Does the town do anything like that?
We do.
So, that way, there's a good timestamp?
They took pictures, they took pictures when I was with Matt. He's telling the guys going out, take pictures.
Yep.
Yeah, we...
We always do that as standard procedure.
Yeah, so we were, I mean, we did, but we weren't notified that, again, that the lack of everybody else, and if you, when you trans, you know, you go on the road, you assume it's safe.
Correct, yeah.
And now, it's getting dark, and there's wires dangling, and so...
And all I could say to you on all of this is, now, have a big red flashing truck there, and people still try to go around that.
Well, they tried to get her on a constable's vehicle, but he, he wasn't flashing the lights. He was trying to be a little less, well, he's obvious, but, I mean, I, but we, we did everything that we possibly could, and the utilities fought us tooth and nail. I think that's the point, that, and the public can't, couldn't understand this.
And I, and I want to be clear, it was, it was really Frontier.
Well, yeah.
You know, I mean, I know a lot, a lot of people want to, you know, go down the Eversource road. Eversource was very responsive on this and managed that scene very appropriately. The, the miscommunication and the drop really happened on Frontier's side.
Yep, yep.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is council member reports and comments. Mr. Grandowski, could you start?
No report, everybody was, they had no quorums, so I couldn't go to any meetings.
Mr. Wood?
No report.
Mr. Lee?
No report this time.
Mr. Kattula?
I'd like to take a minute to thank the Killenley Brooklyn Rotary for the Davis Park, you know, the flags around the park there, it looks awesome. I look forward to seeing that every year. And to the lack of quorums, anybody that's interested in getting any boards or commissions that, list is on the website, and we're always looking for members to join, to fill those positions, so we can have quorums. Even if you're an alternate member, some of those members jump up to, there's a regular member absent to vote, to have, keep a quorum. Also, all the local, no matter where you are in Killenley, all the local fire departments are looking for members. They're struggling to, to, to keep their people, just the fire problem staffed, so if anybody wants to join a fire department or become a part of that, stop by your local fire department, they'll love to see you. I didn't have any meetings, they were canceled for, we had quorums, but they just were canceled for lack of business.
Thank you. Ms. George?
I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Let's see, there was Douglas Construction, they wanted to change zoning to general commercial out Route Six and Snake Meadow Road, that got shot down. There was a company coming into the old Bennys on Route Twelve, that got extended, they had to, they were looking to get the neighbors, all the lot owners around that vicinity to sign on to the project. Couple of them did come and speak, they are in favor of it, so that's continued to this month, so I, most likely, that's going to pass. And the free delay expansion meeting, the follow-up, that's going to be this Monday, the fifteenth, and we encourage people to send in public comment and, or come to that meeting and say your piece. That's for the, the stack height, they want to go up to eighty-five feet, so it would be a special permit, I believe. And I have the agricultural meeting tomorrow night, and that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Barclay?
I didn't attend the historic district because I was working in the Housing Authority, so Birchwood Terrace will be very grateful for the sixteen thousand dollars. They, again, they did apply for state grants, but that grant money went to Fairfield County. So, at Birchwood Terrace, they are going to have the buildings evaluated for their foundations, because several, I don't know how many years ago, they had additions put on, so there's some cracking of the floors and the walls that need to be looked at. And with the gutters, they are having problems getting aluminum to screw the gutters, and they are looking for a new maintenance person, because their longtime maintenance person retired, and they're also looking for housekeepers and cleaners, and that's about it.
Thank you. Ms. Wakefield? It looks like she may be muted. Tammy, do you have anything to report? Ms. Wakefield, are you there? Okay. And I have nothing to report, so we'll move on in the agenda. Item seventeen, executive session. We have nothing for executive session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make that motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Lee, seconded by Mr. Grandowski. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.
You took a minute to be your last chance.
That was my last chance, that's right.